Follow Rockland Planning Board order. The audience process and general public should be aware that any or all proportions of this opening meeting may be recorded by audio and video resources. While some of this meeting may be broadcast periodically by WRPS or other outlets, persons wanting a DVD copy of this meeting shall contact WRPS, the Board of Selectmen's Office, and small fee will be charged. Firstly, on the agenda here, we have a small business site and design for the solar field that's still in golf course. They've asked to be to continue till...
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. I think we're going to be pushed out till, it's a, it's a, twenty-sixth. All right, on the new business, we had a minor modification for Level Academy, it killed the hot pot right coming in.
Is there a mic anywhere? Just give me right here.
Right here?
Everybody seems to have a mic now.
No, not that fancy yet.
For the record, Kevin Greath and Greath Consulting, representing the applicant for Level Academy.
Kevin, you want to?
Yeah.
Because, uh...
Have you seen that too?
Yeah, Mary's...
Tell me.
...in the next meeting, so probably they can keep up with the say.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem. So, the applicant is requesting the planning board modify the site plan to reduce the amount of pavement in the parking lot and eliminate the full circular path around the entire building. What they'd like to do is create some green space in the back of the building over here. This section here is where the cafeteria and general library area is. There's windows out here, and this is one of the main areas for the students to gather. So, they'd like to create green space here. They met with WGP and discussed this, and basically what they arrived at is that we would extend the pavement up fifty feet on each side of the easterly side of the building and then terminate it. We would retain the compacted sub-base so that if a fire truck did need to, or an emergency vehicle needed to come up this way, they still could. But it's basically going to be, it's going to look more like a lawn, and it's going to eliminate the pavement. So, again, the, the goal of that is this green space at the, the exit here. I also have one other item that I wanted to discuss real quick, too. On these approval section, conditions number three, it reads, "The applicant will put privacy fencing outside the buffer zone southeast corner on their property running around the perimeter." And basically, that's this whole side here, and I think, the way it reads, it's all the way around. Recently, the applicant has acquired this parcel, and what they'd like to do is just put in a four-foot chain length fence on this side because it's a retaining wall running down this side now. There, there's just woods here currently, so there's, they're not giving privacy to any abutters they actually own. So, we're wondering if the board would consider a four-foot fence in that area. And, and the way this is written, it's not completely, um, it's difficult to completely follow, but I think you understand what I'm, I'm saying.
So, the retaining wall down that whole length of the property?
Correct. Currently, it's all, it's woods, it's a hundred and fifty thousand square foot, a hundred and forty-eight thousand square foot lot. The residential abutters are here, here, and back here, so we could wrap it, well, tie it in here. But there's no abutters on this property now that we, now that the applicant has acquired it. So, does that you think sort of, like, to modify it for the board's mind?
Do you have any comments?
Nope, just the comments I wrote in the letter, or the conditions I wrote in the letter, if you need those conditions, the fire abutters, no exceptions.
Okay, and we sent off Deputy Chief's comments to Pat Running, and he confirms it's acceptable if one of the fire departments has an overseas weather. And, Randy, do you have any comments?
It looks like the grass.
Correct.
Taking out the asphalt, putting the grass.
Correct.
The fence that was going up that whole side, what was it before and what's it gonna be?
It's specified as privacy fence in the approval. Little big, but we had, we have cedar down this whole side, this, um, frasers are here, and then, um, I think it's chain link with the, um, privacy screening on the back, and then this would probably be the same, but instead, actually, we prefer the view to the, to the woods that's there currently, instead of blocking it out and giving this, this area some, some more air.
Does it own the abutts?
No. This, this is a vacant lot that these guys just acquired. So, there's no abutters to, to impact on that parcel.
This one, there was a reason for privacy fence before, that's all I'm saying.
Oh, yeah.
So, in my, all of a sudden, it's okay now, we can use a different type of fence when we locate it, when we have that way before.
Sure. So, the purpose was to protect the abutters from impacts, uh, site impacts. So, this is no longer an abutter, it's a, it's owned by this, this parcel. We still, uh, actually, this fence is all in, I didn't see this fence in, but this one's... So, we, we respect the residents and the abutters and want to give them privacy over this side. It's, it's no longer an abutter. Even the previous one, we had some small discussions, it was industrial and whatnot, but we just decided to go with privacy fence to separate the two lots. And I guess you could condition that, is any tree clearing or anything here, they need a privacy fence, you know, on the next lot. But we'll be back, I guess, if we do anything on that lot at that point.
I have no problem with removing the space, I wish. The problem I think is that southern exposure is that, that is definitely not a good situation for those neighbors. If, the fence, the privacy fence, I don't think it's there yet, and I don't believe any of the plantings are in yet, so...
Yep.
My big thing is, that needs to be heavily planted, and that privacy fence needs to grow up, because that southern exposure is almost encroaching on all those neighbors.
Okay.
I think the privacy fence is though, but you have the chain link with the fabric on it.
I think what he's referring, yeah, I think what he's referring to is this, this buffer, this, this buffer. So, you want that enhanced?
Yes.
Yep.
That's the only way.
No, I don't think I have a problem as long as that southern side is put up with the privacy fence with either one of the, the items, Kevin.
Okay, thank you.
I concur, I have no problem with removing the asphalt, making more green space, and just, uh, make sure you just put the fence on top of the retaining wall.
Yep.
You know, do what you have to do, make the, maybe it's in the southern side happy, there's other privacy fence.
Understood.
And the, and the, and the, and...
And all the landscaping and everything that...
Because we're going to keep tabs on this.
Yep.
Because I have concerns about it.
Understood, I will relay the message and make sure we enhance the plantings and screen that as best we can.
I, I have a question. I know the fence is up along the south, but it's a chain link fence with the, with the fabric on it all across the back of the property. What I'd like to know is, are they going to, are you giving permission now to move that fence, or put a gate in? I mean, I like it the way it is so far.
That fence is going to stagger. The fence we're talking about is on the easterly side.
Yep, but you, you're talking about ripping the pavement out there and...
Just here.
Kevin, if I'm not mistaken, the pavement is not, the base coat is not in the back, it's just compacted material back there?
Correct.
Uh, so that will now be loom, crushed stone, and some seed is what's going to go back there, and I asked for the compaction testing, so it's already graded, they have heavy machinery on, so our ladder truck can be supported, so there's no asphalt being ripped up this time.
Yeah, you're talking, the north side is the back. I'm calling the southern side the back, or, or, I'm sorry, the east side, you're calling the back, I'm calling the south side the back.
Correct, so this is, this is what we call in the back, I don't know if you can see that, that's...
That's what you're calling the back?
Yeah, this is, well, you, driveway entrance is here, so, yep, that's the back.
And I know there's a fence right across what you're calling the back, now...
Yep, and the fence that we enhance the plantings, so we'll...
Yeah, you have no plans on changing that fence?
Nope.
Did you have, like, a communications box there? Anyways, I don't see how you could...
Yeah, no, everything that's installed is, we're planning on retaining.
Do you have any other...
What's your name, sir? Dave Frazier, I'm the...
David Frazier. My name is... Mike Robert, Doris Street. Just a couple questions, so they don't have any plans to put in a gate for the easement for, for anything for that fence?
There is, uh, there's no easement here, actually. This is part of the parcel, I believe you're probably referring to, and my understanding was that we didn't want to have access to go in and out of there when we approved this. I could ask...
I know the other meetings, they said that there would be no access, and they have the fence up now, and there is no access now. Actually, before they put the fence up, they got robbed over that, so they really don't want to, I would think, they wouldn't want to get there. I definitely don't want to get there.
So, thank you for that. So, on the east-southern side, there's abutters to the south side of your property. I haven't seen a retaining wall or the four-foot fence, you know, with, with any headlights going into your abutters property, are they just east to the end of the south side of the property?
So, the, I, I say no, I'm going to answer these. This is limited access, it's dead end, the main traffic is here and...
Oh, there's no traffic on the east side at all?
It's emergency access, few deliveries, but, and then there's privacy fence here, six-foot privacy fence with the, uh, mesh on it.
There's deliveries, daily deliveries on that, on the east side?
I'm sure they're still working out, you know, how often it's going to be, it's probably daily.
Sorry, they're very extended, so... So, just because my neighbors are not aware, most are not aware of this meeting here tonight, so my concern, if there was one, these houses here that are abutting the property, will have headlights going into their houses on, on the east side, you know, so...
No, because we have, there's privacy fence along the back, this is a road to nowhere, this, this is a road to nowhere. So, traffic is basically going to come in and loop around this way, or go to the parking lot and back out the other. It's a, it's a road, this is basically...
Green space?
Green, it's green.
Oh, so there's no traffic on that side at all?
Correct.
Oh, thank you.
That's where we eliminated the pavement.
Right, okay.
So, now they can't drive around the block.
Right, okay, excellent.
Is this, I'm sorry, is they proposing to put zocker fields over there on that side of the building?
We haven't applied for anything, so we're trying to figure out what the use of that property would be.
I have a question, Mary Passon, 754 Union Street. Back in 2018, 2019, they were supposed to put up a six, six-foot-high opaque fence and, on that driveway, and they haven't done it yet, that I know of. All I see is a chain-linked fence that's not even that high with, um, black backing.
I think that is the shielding.
No, they were supposed to put up a six-foot-high opaque fence. That was in the plans, that's what you guys decided on.
And I think that's what the black, the black fabric does, is...
It's not six-foot-high, and no, it was not to be a chain link with a black back.
Maybe I can clear it up, if some of the driveway, they said they were going to do it all along the private property, but it didn't come all the way around the corner, I think she started running the back.
Yep.
But we're not talking about this property, you're talking about the ring?
Well, the driveway leads to the Level Academy, and it's all of the driveway, not just a section of it, all of it.
As far as I'm aware, we've complied with the approval, we've discussed it with the zoning enforcement officer, fence viewer, anybody who's listed as having any kind of authority over that fence, we've worked closely with the town on choosing materials, we're going to change that outside of the approval. We're even here for, you know, even tonight for discussing modifications, you know, I don't think we've changed anything on that.
Maybe, if you have comments, Mary, as far as I know, you know, fence viewer, I don't expect it, he's been happy with everything that's been, and I, I believe they've complied to a deliver, and I don't have a problem with that since we've spoken about it.
They did say that they would, at one time, said, "Abutting my property," they would put a fence up there, a privacy fence, along wherever residential property was on that driv- but that's, I'm considering that a different project, that's, that's the rinks, but the driveway does go to both places, but they, he said that they would put, they would have, somebody asked him, "Would you have a problem with putting a fence there, privacy fence?" And he said, "Absolutely not." Like, that was quite a while ago.
I know we had that discussion here, and I know we've talked about fences on the entranceway to the arena. We decided that the one place we needed it was on this last curve over here, where the, you know, it's down off of this page now, where the cars, so the headlights turn across the residential lots, and that's where we placed it. And then again, in the parking lot facing towards Russ Connor's yard, we, the zoning enforcement officer is supposed to go out and choose where the fence is to go, and I believe that has happened.
All right, on, on this issue, how does the board feel?
And make a motion to approve what they're looking to do as far as the pavement.
Yeah, we have a, and, um, to modify the fence on the eastern portion of the retaining wall.
Include that in the same motion, please.
I guess, where, where, thoughts, uh, like, remove the privacy screening and keep the fence?
Yeah, and assess this parcel fourteen dot six along the easterly line here.
And add the different plantings?
Different plantings.
Sure.
So, right, just towards neighbors. All right, we have a first and a second, all those, and they have a motion. That's a vote.
Thanks, thanks for your time, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, uh, next item on the agenda is Union Point, and, uh, I'm going to have to lose myself for this, so, John, how are you?
Who is speaking for Union Point, please?
John Lucas, if I could do a quick intro before the development team comes up?
Okay, Mr. Henderson.
Tom Henderson, Forte 200 Union Street, Rockland, and Chairman of the Saltfield Redevelopment Authority. I'm here with Kelly O'Brien-McKinnon, the other Rockland representative over at the Saltfield Redevelopment Authority. It's very exciting to be here in front of the planning board, and I serve with some of you on, and it's nice to be here after a few years of trials and tribulations over at Union Point. And before I introduce the development team and the lead of the development team, you know, the project, you know, some people might say what's been going on the last few years, and the team is going to get into it, but ultimately, just to give you a little history, is back in 2019, after we had gotten rid of the developer, actually, in 2018, but we went through an RFP process in 2019. And just so everybody knows, we only had two development teams submit a proposal, and this went out all across the country, this proposal, well, the request for proposal. We got one group out of New Jersey that was similar to the previous developer that wanted to do piecemeal development and just be in here, in and out, and kind of leave us in the same position we've been in for probably the last 25 years. But we were very lucky to have a development team between Brookfield Properties, New England Development, come in here, submit a proposal, and work with us at the SRA, and also work with the three towns. Their team is nothing but professional, the thing I could say is honesty, is, is what they're about. You might not like to hear the answer, but it's honest about what we have to deal with at the base now and in the future. This team has committed to making sure they look at all aspects of the base, infrastructure. We know it's locked water and sewer for 25 years, traffic impacts, not just, you know, in the surrounding area of Wayman Street or Route 18, they'll talk about it, but they looked at 72 intersections across the south shore. This team is committed, they're determined, again, professional in what they do. They've had a great success here and across the country between Brookfield, their national partner, and the local development team in New England Development. I can say this, I don't know if there's any chances after this, because honestly, if this team can't pull it off, I don't know who can. They have a great team of experts that are looking at all the aspects of the space, again, they'll talk about some of the infrastructure, but the biggest thing why we're here tonight is just to do an introductory presentation to the planning board, because we will be coming back to get to a joint, hopefully, a joint public hearing between the Saltfield Redevelopment Authority and you people in preparation for town meeting in November, our special town meeting. And I hope we can move this off the mark and get this development back on its feet and, and get it moving for development. So, before we get out into the community, we want to make sure the planning board, we went to selectmen two weeks ago, we want to make sure the planning board gets to see some of the information, and I'll turn it over to John Tuig, who's been the lead from New England Development, and thank you.
Question, Tom, tonight, you're just going to the planning board for presentation and information, you're not looking for a decision compromise?
Correct, no, just information, just a overview, and no vote, and later down the road, sometime end of August, September, possibly September, we'll be looking at doing a public hearing to review a more critique of the, of the zoning.
I just want to make sure we know exactly what you're looking for tonight.
Excellent, thanks, John.
Possibly the board may want to move up to the floor so that they can see the screen.
Right there.
Oh, perfect.
I'll turn it over to John Tuig from New England Development, John.
Thanks. Tom took my whole introduction, so I got really nothing more to say, that's all right. For the record, my name is John Tuig, I'm with New England Development. We do have the presentation actually on two screens, much, got it nice, that's really, works out well, so I think I'll probably point to this one a little bit. Thanks for having us, just to clarify, and I just repeat, we're not looking for the board to take any action, we're going to give you a presentation, and you're going to say, "Well, this really isn't normal planning board stuff," but our thought was to tell you a little bit about who we are, a little bit about what the vision of the base and sort of what we've been doing and what kind of timeline it looks like, rather than, as Tom mentioned, we're going to have a formal planning board notice public hearing, go through the zoning, do all that, that's going to be, you know, it probably based on the date from September. But there's a lot of complicated issues associated with the base, we thought it would be interesting, if you haven't seen some of the background, to see it, more for information and so you know where we're coming from, so you don't just try to hit it cold and say, "Well, there's a zoning bylaw, what does that all mean, what context is that?" So, that's, just sort of set the stage about what we'd like to do. Part of that is to tell you who the project team is, so Paul, if you could, if you're going to advance the slides, we can go through. As Tom mentioned, New England Development, which I'll talk about a little bit, and normally, you don't talk about yourself and sort of what you've done, but again, given the history of the base, it's failed four times, where it is today, foreclosed on prior developer, we thought it was important, at least if you know who we are, and talk a little bit about Brookfield Properties. The team that's here, Paulson-Caw, is behind me, Robert Pierce from Brookfield is right there, and then Tony Green, who worked with us on the planning process here. So, that's sort of the development team, it is a joint venture between New England Development and Brookfield Properties. Now, key consultants, Dumont Janks, formerly from Society Recovery Dumont, so he does our planning and our space planning and sort of things about the design. Bob Gaylor is the lead site single guy from Tetra Tech, who's been with us for a lot of years, knows this area, he's actually a native of Rockland, and he is our lead at sites. Transportation, Jeff Durk from Vanessa Associates, who you may have seen in other contexts. Fiscal, which is a little bit unusual when you have fiscal, the reason we brought on a fiscal consultant, RTG is probably very naturally known, mostly works with municipalities and state governments, we asked them to do an analysis for, wait a minute, Rockland, Manhattan, of the economic impacts from the project, costs, tax revenues based on tax rate, what we might develop. And what was very unusual, and one of the reasons we hired them, is you never, you project out for a project, but you never actually have a project conform the base, and if you think about it, we have 1,274 homes in Wayman, it really is the start of the project, so understanding the costs, the revenues, it was a really helpful way to then try to extrapolate that and look at, also look at that. So, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that tonight. And then, the other person who's going to speak to you tonight, who is Tim Sullivan, who's right up there, Tim's our zoning consultant, help develop the zone, we've spent months working on the zoning with the SRA, developing, so that's our team. A little bit after the team, what we want to cover tonight, and again, it's a little bit different than your standard planning board agenda, obviously, a little bit of the introduction, which I've talked about. What we've been doing since site selection, people ask us, "You guys got appointed a while back, what have you been doing?" And I'll talk to you a little bit about that, because it really does matter, the developability of the site, so we'll talk about that. Timeline and process, you ought to understand where we're at, the overall timeline, I didn't want you, again, get the zoning out of context, I want you to see the zoning when you see it, be able to ask questions about where we're at. A little bit of vision, now, I'm not, Ricardo really does that, I'm just going to do a little bit about what we're thinking about, the vision of the space should be, we obviously can get Rockland. Zoning, Tim's going to talk about that, because that's ultimately what'll come before you, and you'll be asked to give a recommendation on what you're going to do. A little bit of the technical studies, Tom mentioned it, we've literally done thousands of pages of technical studies between traffic and stormwater and other things, I'm just going to touch on some of the key issues that everybody talks about, water, sewer, transportation. Talk a little bit, a little bit of the benefits, our vision, and then obviously, let's answer any questions, so that's where our focus is. I am not going to read these words, I'm going to go through New England Development, a little bit about New England Development. New England Development was founded by a chairman about 40 years ago, Steve Carr... New England Development was founded by a chairman about forty years ago, Steve Carr, he's still our chairman. Originally, it was a regional shopping mall company. Most of the malls that you see there down in New England are now owned by Simon, we built them. New England is a very paropial place, if you want from here, they don't like you, and they don't want to talk to you. So there was a high barrier of entry, a lot of the national mall companies, when you were building regional shopping centers, you really weren't, if you weren't from here, you couldn't explain it to communities. So Emerald Square Mall, all kinds, Solomon Farm Mall, all kinds of different malls that you see, all of them in the North Shore, every one of them in the Hampshire, we built millions and millions of square feet of regional shopping centers. And that's originally what the company was. We sort of morphed out of that about twenty years ago, we sold them to Simon. Because we saw even back then that things were changing in the regional shopping mall business. And then we went into things like Man Tucket, we went into golf courses, a couple of other projects I'll, I'll, I'll show you. We went into doing outlet centers, we still have some regional malls, but all kinds of different businesses we've morphed into. I'm gonna talk about a couple of projects that we did, because we just, I think, we picked University Station. You know Amtrak number one-twenty-eight? Do you know that, where the Wegmans is? We brought Wegmans to Massachusetts, we've done five out of the six Wegmans, they're in Massachusetts. The reason I show this project as an example of what we do and how it relates to Union Point. This was a failed project that had been foreclosed on by Anglo-Irish Bank. Degree of fraud involved, um, by that, the project was planned to be a five-million-square-foot center, completely collapsed, all the permits and approvals had expired or had been appealed, all were wrong. There's a lot of similarities actually to Union Point today. But what has it become? About a hundred-and-twenty acres, it's a mixed-use project, we did about two million square feet. If you go up there today, you'll see the retail center, you'll see housing, but we did two different, both condominium and retro housing. You're gonna see a lot of medical buildings, we actually just signed two weeks ago with Dana Fager, they're gonna build a new brain cancer center there, where they actually shoot protons on beams to kill dangerous brain cancer cells. Citizens Make Regional Headquarters are there, it's a very much a mixed-use project that we took, completely repermitted, at the largest town meeting the town of Westwood ever had. We happened to have five towns that we were dealing with, because if you think about that little site, Dedham, No Good, they were all kind of ringing around it, so it's got a lot of similarities to what we're talking about. Now, the project, we're almost done, Dana Fager was one of the last pieces we were done with, just an example of what we did. Another project we do is Cambridge Site, if you know Cambridge Site at all, if you know Cambridge, Cambridge is, is one of the malls we kept, I was but a child when I started working on it in nineteen ninety with Steve Carr. It was really cool at the time, three levels up, three levels down, right on the canal. We rebuilt the canal, it was a million square foot regional shopping center, what have we done? About five years ago, we went into the life science business, orphan manufacturing, research and labs. So the old Sears that was here, Sears is now all the life science building. The Macy's building, which I'll date myself, the old Filings, we took that building down in October, it's on the construction, if you go by there now, you'll see it under construction, uh, it's gonna open in October of this year. And the old Leachmere building, and I'm really dating myself, anybody knows Leachmere, and bought their first camera there, but the Leachmere building, again, that's actually gonna be a residential building, and then next to it, a party graveyard, a life science building. So that's a little bit of what Cambridge, it's the idea, we've owned this property for thirty-three years. It's a little bit of, the reason I, again, I stuck in some little bit about New England Development, say how it's kind of morphed into other things, but also we own it whole for a long period. Very correct, you have this touch on its title, pretty common development, certainly in this region, pine hills, three thousand acres, three thousand residents, about twenty-five hundred of them are built. Certainly, an award-winning project, kind of gives you a sense of how we're doing master plan community. Twenty-five years ago, we were not in that business, so we've morphed into doing that. So that's a little bit about New England Development, a little bit about Brookfield. Brookfield, depending on the day, is the largest, or second-largest real estate company in the world. I know I get this number wrong, where it says twenty-one-eleven billion assets, it's actually fifty billion dollars worth of assets. We do plant communities, a lot of commercial work, a very interesting company, not here. One of the reasons it's a major country, New England Development, this is an area where they have developed, New York, San Francisco, other parts of the country. So we're very happy to have a partner tremendously well-resourced, a good partner for us to have, fifty different master plan communities. A couple of examples, one local in East Cambridge, residential units, research and office, hotel, about over a million square feet of space. Another one down South Carolina, I put that on the list because it was, again, a master plan community, much bigger than the one we're using here, but just to give you a sense. Second thing, a little bit about who we are, and I hate the commercial part of that, but I think it is important for you to know sort of a background. What have we been doing since site selection? Probably four things, we've spent a lot of time, and working with Kelly and Tom, who have been outstanding representatives of Rockland and New England. And I don't say that just because they're here, but they have been, I'm gonna tell you a couple of things at a time. Land ownership, twenty-two, coordination with the Navy, the Navy, this is still, for the Brack site, maybe still owe money for this site, they still control it, it's the same. Redoing a redevelopment plan and then creating the zone, that's probably the four things that we've spent most of our time. But let's talk about why they matter, why does the planning board care about them? When we were appointed, we called this affectionately the Humpty Dumpty Plan, this is what we got from the show. What's in yellow was Washington Capital Management, which was an agent for the capital agency. That's what yellow was, that's what they foreclosed on, that's what Elstar lost in the forecourt. Everything in pink, up until the end of last year, the end of last year, was owned by Elstar. Roadways, water and sewer infrastructure, everything where habitat is, a lot of the open space, it was still owned by Elstar, public hold. The Navy is sort of this, we call this the T-five parcel, the Navy was in here and in other places. And then we had the Coast Guard parcel, which is up in the corner, there was a Coast Guard. You may or may not know, or remember, that was actually bought, checked last year by the General Services Administration, who talked about, helped to live it on, we supported the SRA so the SRA could pull it. These are people who were trying to buy it, they're not looking out for the good holistic nature of the base, they were trying to figure out, you know, what can they stick on there in short term, they're trying to do something. So we helped the SRA buy it, the SRA brings it. So that's sort of the hodgepodge, though, we really, we got it, we couldn't help it. Because if you don't control a lot of the open space and the habitat, and you don't control the infrastructure, you really can't do much. So we've had a few hundred acres of our Washington capital. Now, two big things happened, one, the SRA, we supported and worked with them, did an eminent domain taking, took the land away from Elstar, everything that you've seen. And also, as I mentioned, we worked with the Coast Guard, we had to buy the Coast Guard. We have a deal with the Navy that maybe has to transfer everything to the SRA, we had a deal with the SRA that maybe has to transfer us to master property. So we started with Humpty Dumpty, you go to the next slide, Humpty Dumpty's on your left, look what's on your right. Everything in the blue, we have a right to acquire, it's not something else, ours to, otherwise controlled by the SRA, uncontrolled by the Navy, with an obligation, of course. We can't develop what's on the left, we can't develop what's on the right. That was probably, and, and you realize that happened at the end of last year, so not that far away. But it took us that kind of time to reassemble what the base was, because the base, the post-foreclosure of the base was just a mess. So that's probably the biggest thing that we spent our time on. The next thing we spent time on was the Navy, not sexy stuff, not exciting stuff, but working with the Navy to say, wait a minute. They get a payment every year, we made one in, in March of this year. It's millions of dollars there. That money went back to Washington. So we convinced them to allow that money to go into escrow, stay on the base, and take that money, let us design a PFAS treatment system for de-watering on the base. Which as of March of this year, so a few months ago, they agreed to do, all the payments were last year and this year, escrow, and that's what we're doing, which is a big issue with the Navy, it doesn't sound, again, very sexy and exciting, but it is a huge issue for the base to be able to be fair. The second big thing with it. Third thing was the redevelopment plan, the plan sounds like it's a plan, it's not really a plan. It's a narrative, has a plan attached to it, and I'll show you it's not much of a plan. It sort of talks about the history, what the different land uses are, you have to do a fiscal analysis, how are you gonna handle infrastructure, how are you gonna handle all this space? This base has had a lot of plans. The last one was a ridiculous plan, it was a plan that said, in this zone, we're gonna build a hundred-and-ninety-three units of this zone, we're gonna build a hundred-and-eighty-seven units of that. Anybody's been doing this for a while, we'll tell you, you will never be able to guess what type of use it comes on, particularly air. Even if you think you're really smart and guess it, when the tenant or the buyer comes along and says, well, no, I want here, I want it over there, it never works, it was so specific that it was doomed to fail, it did. And it, it was unquestionable it was gonna fail, and it was written. Our plan, obviously, is different, we'll show you a little bit more. This is, this kind of gives you a, on, on, on a macro level. We, when we started thinking about the plan, we started thinking about, well, how can you create open space all around it? What's in orange there is that which has been developed, we didn't want to touch that, because people have bought and built there, so the twelve-hundred-and-seventy-four homes are sitting in that, what's sort of in the tan is that which hasn't been developed. That gives you on a, just sort of a very macro level, what the land uses and where things were. Okay, so we developed that piece. All right, so that's what we've been doing, what's the timeline actually look like, and what do we do with a lot of that information? Let's look to the next slide. January, March of this year, uh, in March fifteenth, we get the redevelopment plan approved by the SRA. So they took our redevelopment plan and our narrative, and said, okay. They then approved the zoning bylaw and map, which Tim will show you. We're gonna go through that, now that was after months of going through with the council, getting commentary, all the comments, I'm not working on that. We also submitted in this period the technical studies supporting the zone, that's the traffic report, it's all of that. Now, equal in June, major, we spent about eighty-eight days with our friends in work, working through ordinance committee, planning board, the unanimous support from the planning board, we've got a unanimous support from the ordinance committee, we've got a one zero two six, a few weeks ago, to approve the zone. So that's what I'm, I'm doing. Now, as we sit in July, it's kind of a, a couple of things. Getting ready for town meeting, introducing this concept and information, you're trying to hold some of these, you've got three meetings, a meeting with council on aging, and unanimous agreement a couple of weeks ago, and I know the open space committee, the CEO, we're gonna be meeting with them over the next week or so, that's talked through issues. We're also preparing MICA file, the state file, um, that deals with all the issues, transportation, all the different technical issues we have to deal with. This last report they filed was in twenty-seventeen, which contemplated almost four thousand housing units and eight million square feet of commercial space. Problem with that development they submitted is eight million square feet, I don't know if you ever saw the plans or if you remember them at the time, I, I affectionately call it, it somewhat looked like Dubai, the spinning building that was twenty stories tall, man-made lakes and all that, all very interesting. I grew up here, I don't know where that is, I mean, it's certainly not here, but it's, I mean, somewhere in the world. Not a real one, not a, there's any mind. As we move forward, past September, but including of September, October, we have Abingdon town meeting, and Rockland town meeting. But it gets here, and we think of the timeline, and then twenty-twenty-four, what happens in that, we have to finish MICA. We're also, and I did mention, working with natural heritage on habitat issues, open spaces related issue, working on those. So kind of do all that, and then we also have to amend the legislation to the state. Speaker Mariano actually came out of Wayman, uh, talked about water, which I'll talk on in a minute. But the legislation refers to Elstar, that's plans, has that plan that says, I'm gonna build a hundred-and-ninety-seven units of this type, that's all gonna kind of wash away. So that's sort of it. A little bit of timeline, who we are, what do we do with the land? Ricardo would give a much better presentation than I do, but I gave you just a sense, because again, my idea is a little bit introduction, a little bit. Touch on four things, what was this, well, pre-nineteen forty, bugger that. Aquaberry Hill, wooded, pre-World War Two, that's what this area was. Go to World War Two, they pay about eight hundred acres, they create the storage, the base. Recently, when you look at, so what's there today, you look at, you know, where those twelve-hundred-and-seventy-four homes, where's the rent plus and things? Okay, that's what got developed for a period of time. Again, still leaving a lot of the runways, leaving the turnaround area, okay, that's what's there. When we look at that, what's our big idea, and this is sort of why I call it a vision. You know, we jokingly, but not really, call it runways to greenways. The idea of, in just for orientation, here's the hangar, thinking about the spaces of being able to turn these into greenways so that we're connecting a very large northern open space with a large southern open space, and building and developing along those areas. So to connect, reconnect some of those open spaces, that's sort of what the big vision is when we look at the site, how do you actually make that work? It's also one of the reasons in the zoning, we created a buffer all the way around. One thing that's not on the plans, when we were Wayman thinking of the Coast Guard piece, we created another buffer along another Coast Guard piece, we developed it at the time, so that's it. Which creates sort of a core development area, and this is a different sort of a view, northern open space, southern open space, where do you develop, parkway comes through, gives the T-station, you know, how do you develop, where do you put your density, creating a town center along the parkway, hangar just for orientation, and that's been, what is the great thought, higher density right along the parkway, right along the green space, lower density. So that, that's what a vision is, all the building, that's it. Zone, Tim's trying to talk about some guiding principles on zoning, don't change what's already there, people bought and invested, don't change their zoning. The zoning is a mess. One of the biggest complaints we heard when we talked to people about developing here was, we don't even understand the zoning down here, it's thirty-two different oval districts, we don't know how to do it. So simplify the zone, create a place where, in this section of the zone, in this big area, that's where we follow the rules of the road. So again, this is introductory, but we'll spend a few minutes, now, ask him to.
So, as John mentioned a few times here, this will go through the typical zoning process, planning board hearing, like, and this is intended to be an introduction. And John spoke a bit about adopting a redevelopment plan, a little bit about, you know, the vision. The zoning is really implement, tool to implement that, those concepts, and it, it really does it in two parts. So zoning map and zoning text. So with respect to the zoning map, it's proposed a couple of things, not a lot. All of the zoning in areas that are currently developed stays the same. So where properties are developed, and people own them, the zoning's not changing. There's going to be one consolidated open space district around the perimeter of, of the base. And there's one new mixed-use development district, Article seven A, for the area that's, that's left to be developed. Those are, that's really the stuff, keep the zoning as it is for people who have property there. One consolidated open space district, and one new mixed-use district for the areas that have to be developed. The second part of the zoning is the text, the zoning bylaw. And it also implements the redevelopment plan, and all the general provisions of authority and perforce and definitions of the like, those all, those all stay the same. The rules of the road, again, for the people who own property there, those stay the same. The bylaws administered by the SRA. The, the real change in the zoning bylaw is to have one place to look, an Article seven A mixed-use development district for the area that's yet to be developed, so. So here's what I'm, here's what I mean on the zoning map, so on the, on the left side here, this is the current, current zoning map. And, and a few things to note, um, it's a mess. It's, it's been developed in a way to try to be extraordinarily specific in very different areas. So there's multiple underlaid districts, there's multiple overlay districts, there's multiple open space, multiple commercial, multiple residential, and it's all a guess at where things are going to be developed. So what you can see is, on the right, this is much more consistent, you know, with the plan that John showed a minute ago that the SRA approved. So you see open space district around the perimeter, you see these districts here where property is currently owned and developed, those are the same districts that are there today. And then you see a mixed-use development district in the, you know, beige tan with the, with the hash. So this is what's being proposed, open space district existing, and then mixed-use development district. So that's, that's the comparison of the two, of the two. And then just quickly on the text, this is the, the new district, the mixed-use development district. And again, one of the important things is, if someone's gonna come and develop at the base, you know, they'd have to hunt around for the various provisions, this is one place for a lender, for an owner to look for the rules of the road, for what's left to be developed, so this is, it's one place to go. And it's designed to encourage a mix of uses and flexibility, um, and like you, you expect, there's pretty many uses, a lot of uses, dimensional, all, all the like. One of the big things here is there's a package of master redevelopment plans there. So this zoning is supported by a master redevelopment plan that shows where development might start, but also a fiscal report, a traffic report, stormwater report, all of the, the backup that goes with it, um, is part of the zoning. And then when a piece of development goes forward, the SRA looks at, is this piece consistent with all the impacts in all of those reports there? is this piece consistent with all the impacts in all of those reports that are submitted? That's really a highlight of the zoning, more to come as we get into the process, but that's it. That's my last slide.
We're not going to go through the technical studies, but people obviously want to talk about the water, store, transportation, infrastructure, water. Let me tell you a little bit about the water story. Waymouth has some water, but not a great deal. Rockland, Abington, our water challenge, where's it all, is in South Shore. Based on the 2017 study, the idea was that the base bring, we call this a street. Up here in purple, those are all the MWRA routes, because the MWRA has plenty of water. 100 million gallons of water. But it's up in the Blue Hills. Got to take it from the Blue Hills, get it down into the basin. And you'd say, well, why do you have all these different spaghetti plants, different routes? But you might imagine running a line across the social plaza is not as exciting as you could just think about coordination ability, how many feet actually lay on the bed. Versus, and they say, well, why do you have a plan that takes you down through Randolph, around through here? These are running a pipe, and nobody would be able to actually do more than that. So we actually looked at those issues, working with MWRA. Couple of things have come on since even Rachel found out in 2017. MWRA has agreed to waive the entrance fee if you become a member of community. The next 20 million gallons or plus. So not as good. Speaker Mariano and the state are interested in supporting this idea of bringing MWRA water down to the South Shore, inclusive of bringing it down to the base. There are about two routes that they're really focused on, sort of in the middle area. One, Dr. Quincy, when it comes in, the other one. Waymouth has realized that although it has excess water, projecting out, look at this one, one of these. Doesn't. So they're interested in coming MWRA. So your representatives on the SRA, Tom Kelly, others, have joined with, it's not Waymouth, made a filing, Article 8A filing, to become an MWRA community. Remembering the SRA is a quasi municipal agency, that's a really agile department. I can kind of do that as a way to bring water to the base. There are a lot of issues with bringing MWRA water, it's a real, it's the costing, time, communities have to travel, design the pipe, actually, a lot of issues, social. I think I have an answer. Couple of things I can tell you about. This development, one of the reasons it's failed so many times, everybody always looked at it like this. Wow, I can get another 50,000 gallons, I can sell a couple of lots and we can build a lot of buildings. We will not, we don't look at it that way, and we won't do it. This is right. We know to be able to make everybody whole, the woods default, if you do all this infrastructure, what is going to happen? You can't build a couple of buildings and pay for that. I mean, kind of simple economics. We look at the base holistically on all of these issues, water, storage, transportation, social. If we can't solve them, solve them permanently, we're not going to be part of it. So we're working very closely to try to figure out how we can get that part to work and kind of work out times that we're allowed the base to afford. Second thing we're looking at, Paul Quebec, if you would, is Aquaria, which is the red route. Down in Dyckton, Massachusetts, there is a diesel plant. It's controlled pretty much by the city of Rockland. City of Rockland had to build that when it sort of ran out of water, people later couldn't fund it. It has a max capacity of about 5 million gallons a day. Rockland doesn't use that much. Do something, use some of the certain, but certainly not 5 million gallons a day. So, and this was in the 2017 report, the idea of, we're required to study not only MWRA, but also Aquaria. The opportunity of whether that water could be brought up. Rockland has a 36-inch pipe mixed with peaceful metals. Let's not cry about peaceful metals getting actually, because this is 36-inch pipe.
You know that.
I know you're fine. And by the way, I think we talked quite well about, we got to talk about, but anyway. There's a 36-inch pipe for Rockland, and if Rockland's brought all the water, it's a straight shot. It's a great 18,000. So we are in discussion. That has some advantages to it because it also, there may be bigger communities. I've got Rockland, those are, like, this is where we're going to do that. Again, we don't necessarily have an answer for it, a lot of studies reported, but those are probably. We did actually look at, could you get water on the base, could you lift water up? We had, you know, people out there trying to figure out how many gallons you can get a day out of the base. About 150,000 gallons a day. Not great. Doesn't really work for us, it's a total buildup, it'll be ten times that. So, but we looked at all the alternatives, these are the most effective. I'll stop on that because we could go on for water. Sewer, we're very sewer challenged. You know, Waymouth is a MWRA sewer community. One thing that your SRA representatives did was fail the infrastructure on the base, but it was owned by LSTAR. When we were able to do the MITM taking, get it back, we actually fixed the pumping station that was there, which is pumping four times the actual gallonage, almost 40,000 gallons a day, about 85,000. So created 300,000 gallons, that's it, through sewer. Rockland, you folks know better than anybody who works in sewer. We don't necessarily have an answer for that. I, I answered for other things, continuing to study on that. And then Abington, there's a lot of sewer, 95% sewer comes through Rockland. And that's Abington. So we're continuing to study that. Stormwater, again, we looked at this holistically, Bob Dale and his team developed a stormwater system from the entire base. Obviously, he's, he cooperates all that. He's, you know, submitted a stormwater report that looks at the different things that might be facing on storm. And then finally, the last one is transportation. This is, you know, Tom mentioned this, this is Jeff Dirck, 72 intersection that we're studying. And they vary in different things that you have to do in order to do careful. But just on a very macro, sort of high level, if you look at the MIPA approval in 2007, they predict about 35,000 trips. You look at 2017, I affectionately call it the Dubai plan with the 20-story buildings, at 80,000 trips. The plan that we're looking at, and we just sort of had to assume, 2 million square feet, 6,000 homes, if you did that plan, because you have to pick a project when you're doing traffic, so about 48,000 trips. So more than 2007 or less than 2017. What that all dictated in the report are traffic signal timing about 10 locations, intersection widening about 12, roadway widening at four, traffic coming in another for about 30 intersections. But that can be done with two. Again, looking at full buildout of the base, we did the whole thing. But that's sort of what the technical studies. I mentioned it early, and I'd like to go through it, which is very quickly, fiscal on RTG. If people want to ask, well, what's the money? What's the advantage for the community to look at this? As I mentioned, we had an unusual case. We actually had a, you know, a subject to look at, namely the 1,274 homes, 2,400 residents live here today, that they have 16, 17 school-aged children, they have so much commercial space in this world. So we asked RTG, analyze it if we built it up, what would it look like? And we had them look at residential buildout, commercial buildout on a per area basis. What would the revenues be based on our tax rates? What would the cost be? Go into, leave a spot in, do we know, what would the cost be to do it? Look at it, let's generate government costs, look at all that. What would the school-aged children? And we, we did one thing before I go through what the conclusions were. On school-aged children, which is always provocative, when I first started doing this, everybody would say residential bed, 11 school kids, it'll cost a ton of lot. That was the standard. If you asked me 10 years ago, I would tell you yes, sure, sure. That is not true today because of how we are living, the amount of children that we're having, the type of housing that we're building. Just, you know, people get older and our, our, how we function, how we look at life. But that all said, we told them on, because knowing that the sensitivity would be there, we said, don't assume the school-aged children percentages that you see in the base today. Go into Rockland. Someone built a 10-watt, four-bedroom subdivision, what is a school, children, percentages that you look at? They're much higher. And we said, when you do the expenses for the net revenue calculation, use those anyways. Don't use what's in the base. Now, we believe what they would be once in the base. And we try to overstate expenses and understate revenue. Part I showed you in Westwood, when we originally did that, almost, Paul and I did that almost 10 years ago when we started, we predicted $7 million for the revenue. We're at 11. Our schoolchildren is still, I think Paul, the same number. We predicted it at, not the number they predicted it at. Because what we've found is, it's much better to understate the net revenues than to overstate them. Because the best thing that we have, I mean, we've been going for a long time, we've been doing this for a while. I started out as a peatcraft lawyer 30 years ago plus. The only column card we have is the last community we were in. And we invite and ask people where we want. So we have to always deliver on what we promise and not overpromise. So that's how we look at it. It's a little bit of an advertisement, so I don't understand how we look at it. So, go to the next one. This is Waymouth, 1,274 homes, asset value $400 million, gross taxes 5.3. They've got, when we figured out police fire, all the cost, about $900,000, and they have some bond payments. They've got a roadway going through a lot. The net to Waymouth on an annual basis right now, what's built is about 3.2 million. It's a really good indicator of the type of things we would like to receive or for. Primarily their residential, or we have some commercials. So when you look at that, and by the way, there's a whole report that goes with this. I'm just giving a summary chart. When we look at Rockland, we estimate 4.1 to 5.5 million dollars for a net tax revenue. Why do we have two columns? One says 75% commercial, that says 75% residential. We asked them to weight average and to say, okay, if most of it was a commercial development, we're commercial development, what we do. We said, most of it was commercial, what would the tax revenue look like? And most of it was residential. And if I 25 split either way, what would that look like? You can see in this particular case, but it is the nature of sort of costing expenses today. You've got a higher residential. So therefore you have higher taxes. But in any event, significant net revenue to all the communities who work at Waymouth, again, 3.2 then today, though their number is only 20,000. Last two slides. A little bit about why, why is this important? Why do they matter should be probably what the slides are. We've got to stabilize the base. It hasn't had to develop for several years. I never knew some of the things that I've learned about, that people actually come in with rider mowers on, they have trucks that unload them and race parts of the base. Never do that, that's a thing, by the way. The Brazilian kite festival, which quite honestly is an excuse to drink all day. But they sell, they sell, they put up some nice kites. The base suffers from, as much as the SRA is trying to, having that degree of open space untenable. Now, we're actually increasing security there, it's not something that we have to do, but we wanted to do this summer to try to control some of that. But everything from the curbing, how it's operating, what's going on, they would have hundreds of acres open and nobody there. So that's really relates to some of the efficiencies. All the local and state permits have to be done. State permits refer to 500 vehicles coming out the front door in 18. That's nothing, I mean, think of those 1,274 residents. All this, all these state permits have to be done. They defaulted on the natural heritage permits, they defaulted on the estuaral counts. They're all. Infrastructure. If you don't solve the long-term water, sewer, transportation, and all of the projects, as I say, we're not going to do it if you can't. You don't have all the answers yet, so it's going to take us some time to do it. First step is to create the zoning fabric from which we can develop. Open space permit offers issues a little bit about that, flexibility. And then the fiscal benefits for Rockland, those were the benefits. So last slide, where, where do we go from here? What's next here? Well, we're going to see if the zoning approvals for Waymouth, we got it. Rockland, Abington, hopefully by November, because you have, as I say, a very, so. Natural Heritage, we're working with them on an open space proposal. We hope to present that to the open space committee with some more detail. And we're talking about by increasing the model district's habitat. His habitat turtles don't want to stay in line, you've got to adjust where that's going to be. And the current contiguous space, as opposed to a little chopped up. We're working with the MBTA a little bit on some multifamily zoning. Abington has that issue with relationship with TBR. We're working on that. Working, obviously, on MWRA, Aquaria, as I mentioned. Mast dot, we're meeting with the public private partnership on what can be done, and also as it relates to T stock, whatever, if you're in concern. Our goal is to have our final approvals in 2024. We'll be working, as I mentioned before, in 2024, primarily with the legislation, I would say, how we do the project for. It's an ambitious schedule, but it is one where we think the base has real opportunity. We think we have a good sense of, we get a lot of support in Waymouth, with 700 people sign a petition of support. A lot of our average community meetings, 150, 200 people. So there's a lot of desire to do this for work. And we hope in Rockland, we get that same level of support, the ultimate base redevelopment that is in Waymouth. That's true, it is, but there's not an insignificant amount to develop both our commercial and residential businesses. Must start with it, it's a lot of information. But again, I hope you see why we wanted to kind of, you know, didn't want to come in cold and say, hey, let's talk about the zoning bylaw. This is a little bit of background, so what we do and where we are.
Randy, do you have any questions to ask? Think of the most open that?
Now, maybe in transportation, there may be some ultimately to be looked at, transportation please. But not directly. Right on the line there in the top, right.
Valley? Is there a plan to make the extensive presentation at town meeting?
We're talking, we obviously have to talk to the moderator, but that's our intention. And what we're trying to do in the interim is to get out and start meeting. I figure we have a bunch of, next week and the following week, some community groups are going out to council on aging. We have people like that. And we have that, we have something going on in Abington. We're going to schedule a community meeting too, which we're just, you know, for people to come and hear and sort of understand then. Yeah, that's going to be our program, so worry about this.
Yeah, we believe full heartedly in the project, I just think that the message needs to get out and get out loud.
In your transportation, or your, I guess, product transportation, are you including any roadways that are just not on the base now? Or some particularly concerning Rockland, but?
Most of the, of the 72 intersections are in fact not on the base. We actually worked with, I think Rockland was able to get a Mass Works grant, and we just failed working with the SRA on the funding for the match for that. So there, which is, you know, some of the work that has to be done over on the 228 side, and then looking at that. And I know eventually talking about a tip, but we want to work with Rockland, see if there's ways to do, they did a lot of Mass Works grants to fund the past design, we're working on design, but for ultimate.
Could I somewhat assume that that would probably be like Hingham Street and the 4th Park Drive, which are severely narrowed now compared to what transportation could be on it with the base building?
And one of the plans, which I know, Tom, your assistant finance manager was talking about a widening project there, and we're sort of going through, when we first looked at it, really was not ambitious enough, especially as it flared out to the intersection, so we're going to get some comments.
So in regards to that, so the stuff that you're looking at now with the environment and Mast DOT, is that for current projects or is that for buildup?
It will build up. What Mast DOT wants to hear about and what we're required to do on the MIPA, they don't allow segmentation, we can't just talk all in this phase, we might do this. We'll actually have a total buildout, you know, we built everything, every piece of the base out. What would that, and then we talk about how you would phase that in as you go along and, you know, as you advance phases. We also expect there's going to be discussion with them about the Kegel rail. You did a project, and they're doing it now up in Austin. You know where the New Balance is, and we own the Teneca site right next to the Kegel rail station and also, you know, Austin yard, the largest one. They're our first building out of construction. But a lot of that discussion was, how can you increase the ridership that's there? Because there only two stops out of South Station. And we ended up doing an MBTA agreement over the next 15 years, where as we increase size of the project, we actually help support financially, so they have double decker, so they increase frequency. It's that type of thing. And we kind of envisioned that, you know, as we add people here, we're going to have to do that. So it's not just Mast dot, it'll be Mast dot and MBTA. They're going to have the bulk be looked at and be supported. Because we want to be sure, especially if we're selling a transit-oriented project, and the parking, and, you know, people have to have adequate train trips, the size of the, what they're using for all trains.
Open it up to the public, anyone in the public that have a question?
Yeah, a question for you with regards to.
Please.
Excuse me?
Excuse me?
Name and address.
Oh, Jack Egan, thirty eight Webster Street. You keep mentioning Aquaria Water. Now, I haven't met with those people probably eight or ten years ago. And I'm, as you know, maybe everybody in here does not know, that's their backup emergency supply water, in case they do lose the water at the other locations. They have turned down multiple municipalities to date. And I think anybody, based upon what they told me back then, I think it's still good now. It would be political or legal suicide to enter into any agreement to sell you water out of that facility. Now, have you had other discussions with them that they will sell you that?
Yes, and also, you may or may not be aware, Rockland has also considered buying the plant.
Say what?
Buying the plant from Aquaria. So that's another.
Yeah.
We've had, I'm not going to disclose the discussions we've had, but they're extensive and have been going on for quite a while.
Okay. But that's the minimum amount of water they need to run the, everything, the fire department, and to give a proper water supply to people if they lose their other sources. So I don't know how you're going to work around that with them. I think they'd be sued by the other municipalities they turned down on there.
I don't know about that, but they have a certain gallonage that they can currently produce, and they have an additional gallonage that they could produce with certain.
Okay.
Which is a lot.
Now, when Elster was running Union Point, I had a discussion offline with the MWRA. They said to support the base, it really needed a home run line from their facility into Union Point. They're not insisting on that anymore? Okay. Because they were talking a hundred million dollars and minimum of ten years to do it.
I'm not talking, I'm not going to say they're not still talking a hundred million dollars, but it is a different view, especially if the SRA and Waymouth are, are MWRA communities. It's a different way of looking at it. Where are we connected and how we're connected will be different. Wouldn't just, you're talking about the sort of direct pipe process that's not necessarily.
Okay. And since you're taking a holistic view, if Rockland can't supply sewer, the whole thing is dead? Well, you said you need to solve it for all three communities.
We do for ultimate build out. But whether, there's Rockland, our alternative solution for Rockland, those are things that we're looking at.
I couldn't hear you.
An alternative solution for Rockland. Rockland's got a significant sewer issue right now as. Are there alternatives to that? Are there abilities to be able to address issues that they have with their system? Are there abilities for Rockland to become, that part of the base to be serviced by the MWRA sewer system? I'm not saying any of these are necessarily the answers, but there are multiple ways to.
Okay, but to go with the MWRA, you're still going to need a new pipe? Because you have capacity issues right now for the Granger.
We do, we do, and we've studied that and had discussions with them about the pump station, what would have to be done in order to increase the plants.
But you're willing to put up over a hundred million dollars to get this thing rolling?
The total infrastructure budget certainly on this for water sewer and everything else certainly exceeds that number. We are also, as part of working with Waymouth, to the extent that the state has an interest in creating additional water infrastructure for the South Shore, some of those monies may be, be able to be funded by state programs, which would be right. Because if you think about all the South Shore towns, not one of them will.
Well, I know they, they want to go down to the Cape, so, you know, but that's going to cost.
That's rather ambitious.
Billions and billions of dollars.
That's, that's, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about an incremental approach to be able to bring water in this region. That's what MWRA is talking about.
Yes, sir. I worked for a water company thirty nine years, and we had a situation where large development needed water that we couldn't provide. And they got it from another town, and they wheeled it through our town, and it was nothing but nightmares because our customers, they were paying a very high rate for the water, were getting a vastly inferior water from another town. And it was, because you can't, if you're putting it through town, you can't separate it. It's going through pipes and there was a lot of, lot of backlash, a lot of trouble. People didn't want to be paying the high rates for inferior quality of water. It was just a nightmare. I don't know if that, if you can do anything about that, but it was absolutely horrendous. Billing, quality of water, everything.
Mary, you have a question?
Yes. The issue of, I think the mayor of Waymouth thinks he's going to wheel water to the base. I know the SRA has a written agreement to help pay for engineering for Waymouth to go on MWRA water. Doesn't say anything about the Union Point, Rockland, and Abington. And I was at the December fifth meeting with the MWRA, which the mayor was at, and they told them they prefer a dedicated pipeline. So what are you doing about that?
I, I think there's a couple of issues. There's water to the base, and then there's water to Waymouth, in which we are part of Waymouth. The prior discussions, the traditional filings, all dealt with sort of that direct pipe solution, the pipe directly to the base. Ultimately, in the SRA, if Waymouth were not to support that, were not to support joining the MWRA for whatever reason, that is an option that would be there to do it directly. Current discussions are bringing the water to Waymouth and the region, and we would be a customer of Waymouth as part of the base as an owner of property in.
That's not how the MWRA sees things. Each town is separate. They would have to do their own separate thing.
And I think you also, if you were at that meeting, know that there were some discussions about the other communities become MWRA for purposes of base. There was also the discussion that the SRA is a water company. And as the overarching quasi municipal agency visits, we don't have all the answers to this yet. We don't have all the answers to this yet. We're working on it. It's like a little chess match, and sort of go forward a little bit, try to figure out where we're at, keep going. I think there's a lot of willingness to try to find a solution for the region. In a positive way, that's what we're trying to do, and not just sort of throw every issue down, so don't do that. So that's the only way this is going to get solved.
In terms of Aquaria, they're going to be coming through Abington, and now they're going to be wheeling water. Because that, it's a joint water works, so we're going to need to know how that's going to work.
Our, our sense is at the moment is that that, with that solution, would be a pipe, a bayside. It's a different solution.
Any other questions from the public?
I have a few, a couple in session. I guess the first question, John, by the way, it's great to see your presentation again.
You've said it before.
The first question would be, if the planning board votes on the zoning changes at some point down the line, September or whatever it is, do they lose all control of whatever goes into the Rockland section of the Union Point after that?
Well, the SRA, as, as it is today, the SRA has control of approval of a particular project that goes in. What is different about this zone is it was a multi-part process. You have to actually go through the massive development. Someone has a project they want to do, they want to supply land to them. That goes through the massive development process. Review the design, does it all fit, is it in keeping? Then they have to make all the filings that you would normally see and test them against the filings that we have given. Does it fit into the transportation program? Does it fit into the stormwater program? Is it physically positive for the community? All of that has to be handled. That goes through a permanent process, the SRA. As it is today, the SRA is the permanent granting authority on the base. That's not, and this issue was raised in, in, in Waymouth, and people who are less familiar with the base say, well, doesn't the Waymouth Planning Board make all the decisions, for example? No, and that's never been the case, and that's not what the legislation says. It is a redevelopment authority, of which Rockland has representatives who sit on the board. That's way different. And we're not changing.
John, if I could expand on that through the chairman, to Mike. The SRA does planning, zoning, and conservation. We'll continue to do that. That's not changing under the current zoning. And then all the local permits as far as building inspector, electrical inspector, plumbing, that all is done through the individual towns. Stays the same, is not changing under the zoning at all.
May I follow up with Donald Pan sixty four Union, a minute? I don't understand why towns would want to give up their ability to review and to inspect and enforce to a board that mostly is people that don't live in those towns.
Actually, Donald, it's made up of two people from Rockland, two people from Waymouth, one person from Abington, and then two residents that actually live on the base, a labor representative and a chamber of commerce representative for the board. So that's the makeup. So it's a, it's a broad overview of the, of the entire base. Now, when this, this has been the way, went back to Triton. Triton was the permit granting authority back before, and then when the legislation changed, it remained with the SRA as the permit granting authority with the exception of the local permits.
That was a similar move. At that point, when we were considering the former AV station as one unit, but now we've divided it up into three towns. And what about the taxes? Is, is, is the, the town, we'll be collecting taxes as usual?
It hasn't changed since the 2014 legislation. The 2014 legislation, which these gentlemen did not present, the previous developer did, is how they divided it into what, what you want to say is three towns, but that's how we, it used to go, the tax revenue prior to 2014 went to the Triton Corporation and then got distributed out as far as different payments. But now it goes back to the individual towns, which it has been to the point where when we did the eminent domain taking, Rockland was made whole on their back taxes by the SRA and the development team that Elster did not pay for three hundred and three thousand dollars.
So the, the, would the, would the assessors from Rockland be involved in assessing the property? And if, if tax title situation goes, it's, it would be the, the town?
Yes.
So only the, the zoning, the conservation?
And the planning.
And the planning, towns give that up?
They didn't give it up, Donald. Nobody, they're not giving it up. They didn't have it. They, that's what the SRA was created for.
Tom, just to follow up on that a little bit. So what is the SRA, which was one community then that was going to split the taxes and everything else? And that's when the SRA got, you know, power over conservation, planning, and whatnot. So now it's three different towns totally taxed to Rockland, taxed to Waymouth, taxed to Abington. It just, you know, it's up to, you know, it just seems that Rockland should have some control over the planning of the property. They did it in Westwood. Westwood, Westwood was part of the process, I think, at University Station.
This was never controlled by, at least hasn't been since World War Two. This is a BRAT base. It's owned by the federal government. That's what the, there's no, and federal government supersedes every, every local firm. That's what this is. And when it became, and it's still probably owned by them, Triton had, legislation was created to be able to do the redevelopment of the base, which vested these rights in a redevelopment authority, which is now today, the SRA. You can't, what was changed was that the community's got two major benefits. Taxing authority, all that, direct receipt, the ability to be able to issue building permits, collect fees, and control those issues. So that sort of now sits with the town. But I wouldn't want you to think about, oh, well, it's now all three towns. It's not. It is your redevelopment authority has a, oversees a development, because it really isn't a place. And you have to think of it as a place. And if you think of it as, well, it's this piece of that community and that piece of community, which is very hard to do when you're standing in front of a community and say, you can't think of it just myopically as this is a piece of Rockland, an ionic control. Because it's not. It's the federal government base and a redevelopment authority. The advantage is, towns happen to get the tax revenues and the building department control of it, which is great. But you want to develop it so it looks and feels and is a place, not, well, this is the kind of thing we do in Rockland. That's why they created this one. And that was the right way to do it. And also remember, this significant, and this was raised in Waymouth, and I don't know if you were at the meeting, well, what happens if this doesn't go forward? There's fifty to sixty million dollars worth of debt on this problem. One of the questions we were asked, well, why doesn't this, Rockland take its, Abington takes its piece, and Waymouth takes its piece? Well, knowing as I do, and then we worked in state government, well, then, by the way, Rockland's going to be looking at their share of debt to take associated with it. It's from a pure development standpoint, how to move this forward, look at it holistically as the base, realize there are tax and other benefits that have gone directly to the communities, and let it be developed by the redevelopment authority, which includes representatives in your community. That's, that was the overarching theory behind it. And that exists today. And the idea that we can somehow change that, I mean, it is the creature of legislation. You can't change that. And by the way, I would suggest to you, forgetting about the fact that we wanted to develop it, you don't want to change it. Because the state is then going to say, okay, this failed development, somebody owes us that sixty million dollars, you better send it. You don't want to do that. Forgetting about whether you support us or not.
Mary?
I'm just going to say this, you're talking to people in this room that took part in the legislation back in nineteen ninety eight, back in two thousand and fourteen. No, it wasn't strictly the developer created the legislation. There are people in this room that took part in that and have been involved all along. No, this is not just a one development thing. It is the three towns. And what we need to know is, when are you going to put a shovel in?
Leave me, Mary, I'll, through the chair, I'll answer that. Would like to do it as soon as possible.
No, you need to actually tell us, because we need to know. We've heard you say ten to fifteen years, but you're coming and wanting our vote.
Absolutely. Because if, if you looked at our overall timeline, we have to get the zoning approved. We have to move forward on the water and sewer and the plants. We have to amend the legislation. We have to fix all the state permits and approvals. Our goal is to have that done by the end of next year, so that we then could be building in twenty five. That's our goal. And that's, we've said that at every one of these meetings.
Then come back in ten and fifteen years when you've actually shown us what you've done, and we'll have a vote.
How do you do that if you don't give us the rights to be?
Well, no, unfortunately, you can do your stuff right in Waymouth right now. There's nothing stopping anything from coming in there.
You don't want this to happen, so let's.
No, no, that's not the point.
Well, no, that isn't.
And do not try to pin that. I'm looking at your map, and you're not going all the way across. You're telling us that we're going to get the least revenue. You're showing us a map, okay, where you don't go all the way along those runways that can be developed in Rockland. So don't try to claim that anybody's against it. I am asking you legitimate questions, and you're not giving me an answer.
You have approximately, again, through the chair, approximately the same amount of developable land that you had before. It is true that Rockland and Abington have the smallest pieces of land for development. That is true. You actually in Rockland have probably the largest amount of habitat and open space?
It doesn't have that much, that it's less than Abington in development.
But that hasn't changed roughly seventy acres or so that are developable, which was before and is now, is about what it is. But by the way, you know this, from two thousand and nine forward, we still have to go back through natural heritage and address the things that were not done by Elster in twenty seventeen to fix the natural heritage permits and to allow developable area in Abington and lot. And that's one of the reasons that we're talking about. Try to figure out how best to do that and to create extended restricted land and more habitat. That's in, that's what we're trying to do so that we can develop in all communities. But if you have four hundred and fifty plus or minus developable acres, you've probably got about twenty percent in Rockland, and probably got a little bit more.
Yes, four hundred and forty nine acres per the permit. There's three hundred and eighty one acres per the National Park Service.
Through, through the chairman, Mary, you talk about the people that were involved in this, in the legislation. I wasn't involved in nineteen ninety eight as I was four years out of high school, but I was involved in twenty fourteen. 2014 when we had the group that involved all the different boards. I was on the planning board at the time, zoning board, conservation, town administrator, town accountant. You attended all the meetings. I was with you. You spoke very frequently at those meetings, and we talked about, one of the importances was of the town to maintain open space and grasslands on the property. And it was an agree back then when we did the zoning in 20, well, it was 2015, which was approved in 2016 finally after our town meeting, was, we were all in agreement. We all spoke in support of town meeting. You spoke in support of town meeting.
And in 2016.
Can I please finish? It was, back then it was 64 acres, today it's 64 acres. We have 64 acres of developable land. I am one that would like to expand our developable area, but I want to be sensitive to open space and the habitat, all the things that we have to consider, park and recreation land. Is there a time in the future we can look at it? Maybe. But right now, we need to look at today. And we need to look at, and we can't wait 10 to 15 years. 10 to 15 years, and we don't develop, it's gone. We'll have a nice parkway and no development and no tax revenue.
That's my point. That's my point. You're telling us 10 and 15 years from now?
No.
You will develop something?
No.
But you want our vote now?
Mary, I don't, I never heard that out of John.
I did, over in Waymouth.
Okay. They said it could take up to 10 to 15 years to completion. They want to stop putting shovels in the ground in 2025. That may mean Rockland. It depends on a project. It depends on utilities. These are things that are just unknown at this point, but we're working on it together, cohesively. You know, there's no perfect answer. I had to say it, and I think Selectman of Rockland said it at our meeting in Waymouth. He said, trust but verify. We have to have some trust together. Residents, town, boards, SRA, developer. Because there's not many options after this, I can promise you that. And I've sat and watched the previous developer, what he did to this property, and then getting this developer, and some of the days, I wasn't sure how long we would be here, Mary. The SRA and what would happen to that land. There's over $1 million in encumbrances that the SRA has to pay every year for the budget, and the developer pays 75% of that budget. We don't have a developer, we don't have a budget. We don't have turnover monitoring for $100,000 that we do every year, $86,000 we do every year. So we have to trust but verify. We have to work with our boards and our teams. And as I said in my opening presentation, this group is honest. You might not want to hear their answer, but it's the honest, and it's the truth about the development. And they're being straight with us. And they're being straight to get us to understand the project and the issues that we have to deal with moving forward. So I think we have to, again, work together as a community and boards to make sure we are maintaining open space, we're maintaining developable land, and we're doing the right thing for the town of Rockland, for the future, for new growth in the community.
I think, Mary, we're going around in circles now, so the last question.
If I could have two, that would be one.
Mr. Chairman, we're about to say a question, please.
Thanks, John. Just for the record, I support the project. I'm not fighting you with any of those questions. I'm just looking for answers for the town, you know. So at another meeting, you mentioned Abington building commercial, all commercial in Abington? So I guess my point is, the question I have is, is it true that you can build up to 7,200 units of housing on the base? If commercial is, is Abington only going to be built commercial, that means there's going to be a lot of housing coming to Rockland?
I don't know whether you've heard that.
From you?
No. What I repeated was a comment that was made by someone in Abington under the old plan, that Abington would like to have commercial versus residential space because one of the speakers in Abington said they believe that commercial space is advantageous from a tax standpoint as opposed to commercial. That's what you heard. And you hear me saying that they're going to have all of the commercials all going to be in Abington. What I will say to you is this, to kiss a death for any of these types of projects when people say, well, you got to put the commercial here, or you got to put the residential here, or there's going to be so much of this, so much of that. It never works. You can't finance it, you can't structure it that way. Which is why we have never said that it's all going to be here, all going to be there. We are basically commercial developers, we do residential projects. We hope there's a lot of commercial development here. But where it ends up, what type it is, will be determined by the market over time. That's what you heard me say. You've never heard me say that in Abington.
That's what I thought. I have to check the recording, but, okay. That's it, man.
All right. I think we'll close this down. I think everything has been done. I'm sorry, Donald, but we're going around in circles at this point.
He's in circles.
He's in circles, yeah. We're not.
The board got anything else to say?
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the Softville Redevelopment Authority, thank you for your time and opportunity to come and present tonight and get the information out there. We look forward to the opportunity to coordinate on a public hearing when it comes time in September. Looking forward to that. Thank you for the time and the board members.
I strongly appreciate the courtesy to provide us tonight. Hope this information was helpful. Everybody's got a good feeling we'll make this work, and Mary and others and Donald. I mean, we want to do the best project we can. So again, thank you for the time. I echo what?
Mr. Chairman, turn it back to you.
Next thing on our agenda is some design review for 333 Waymouth Street.
I think that could make this stuff exciting and make it awesome.
Can you hear where it's Rockland?
Oh, I can see it.
Okay, clear.
Obviously, you had your schedule.
At this point?
Okay, that's good. Seriously.
Yeah, talk to them about a date, will you?
Yeah.
Welcome.
Just a quick overview, putting a 13,600 square foot addition on our existing building. And the plans that you have there represent at first level is warehouse space and one office, a bathroom, a key room, and technical equipment room. And those are all in the plan. And second level consists of office space, 2,300 square feet, and mezzanine, also 2,000 square feet. And, and a front door to the building, have a nice elevator, and...
Let's go back and watch that sort of. I see a first floor plan. And then I see a mezzanine. Did she say second floor?
No.
No, exactly. Mezzanine, second floor. So this is the front door. There's a feature panel that would be over the front door. It's called Rain Shield. And it consists of a product, a parquet, a dino. That is the sample of product. It's like, it actually is wood. It's plywood that's finished. And it would look like this box in over the door. Now, you have it there on the image, yes, exactly. But I just wanted to recolor the whole thing that presented this, like the rendering that we have. And this is the color of the metal building.
I told you that too.
Yes, it's the existing building, Calvin. This rendering actually had the architect put both buildings on so you could see what it looked like. So the existing building, and you were wondering if you could finish off the existing building with an additional permit, need to finish on the existing building. That one will have some, let's hear. So this is the existing building. It does not have this. I'm sorry. This is the existing building, yeah, but this is the additional. So just to make it complimentary. So we started clearing the lot. Move unearthed all kinds of things. So it'll be a project.
Do you have rooftop units on here?
rooftop units?
Are you bringing?
Yeah, so actually we're discussing that today as to whether or not we have space to leave on the ground and work with the market.
Hang on, we'll put in a couple of curves. Why not put rooftops on at this present time?
Do you have a lighting plan?
Yes.
Do you have a lighting plan?
Yeah, we presented it at the last meeting. We got a lighting consultant in to make sure that we did not spread beyond the immediate area. Yeah, they did talk about, they talked about lighting and primer and stuff like that. That was the last site.
Did we ever see an actual photo?
Yeah, they were all done, yeah.
They did talk about lighting and site. Yes.
Yes, we only approved site.
Yeah.
What do you call that when you lift one finger, that's all you something?
Forum, I can.
I didn't bring it with me, but I can certainly send it to you.
It was July. Sorry, July. Actually, I love my backhand, I drive, I think I do a lot of that. I just don't think it was approved, so I'm pretty glad.
I didn't bring it with me, but I can certainly send it to you.
I'm sure. Actually, I'm all about my driver, I think I do a lot of that. I just don't think it was approved, so I'm pretty glad. I'm 2020. Now, I'm just, I'm just following. Actually, I love my backhand, I drive, I think I do a lot of that. I just don't think it was approved, so I'm pretty glad. I'm 2020.
Right now.
I think it was mine. I think it was mine. Rockland, two or three. I'm seeing it. So do you do that? Yeah, I do. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Yes, yeah, we did all the forms and that, yeah.
This is big, that's true.
Yeah, they did a lot of work on it right outside of Rockland. They put a new top coat on, it's great.
And, yes.
Yeah.
You mentioned the parquet panels. You wanted to move it over, you also wanted to do it on the existing building?
Yeah, we'd like to, to make it complimentary.
I don't know.
So we could move it.
So the new parquet panels, they're putting on the new section, got someone to put on the old section? Yeah, as well. Yeah, they'll have to get a gold one. That's a little different. I didn't want any questions.
Thank you.
This one, whether it's the same? Yeah, I don't know. Which is on the back there? I think we'll make the whole complex.
And Mr. Taylor came out from Ohio, not met with us in the whole area, and he's going to work that eventually the road we could ride anyway, the bike, we could clear all the lot, you know, move all the trees in the town, maybe the site needs it, the front of the property. So, so good.
Okay. Okay. I got it, yeah. No.
Is that it? It's just this, you're telling me what product they're using.
Yeah.
Exterior plywood, it's actually plywood and not aluminum?
I thought it was like boatwood, but it is real wood, you said.
Yeah.
I was going to say, fire treated?
Probably not.
Fire treated. It went to the exterior.
It's been 25 years, it's still true. Fix it up.
Yeah, usually you see like a little barn or some panels, you know.
All the fig wood they have up there now.
Yeah, that's old as cool, you know what I mean? Where they put the phenolic up on the canopy.
It's a good tree up there, you can pick up there. It's basically all ancient. You could add some of the plant. You see another plant.
Do you have any questions?
I'm good. John? I'm also. I want some more, so.
Do you have any questions?
I'm good.
We don't have any stamps on them.
The big stamp. They don't have the seal or the signature.
No signature.
I would need three sets.
Yeah. I make a motion to approve with the condition that we receive the stamp plans.
So we can, fine, if you bring them in and everything, and next time you meet, sign them.
Is that, are you meeting with Honest?
Yeah, if you can get them into us, because we probably won't be meeting in August, but if you get them into us, we can all coordinate.
Yeah.
Sign them, yeah, I'll get the signature and step, and then we can all meet up and sign them, so you can.
Yeah, so if you get the three full sets this size, and you bring them to the town clerk's office, they'll stamp them to let me know that they have them, and then I'll come and get them, and I'll meet up with everybody to get them signed. And then I'll get you to, like, you know, when it's ready. You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, yeah. All of us, right, do we have a second on the motion? All right. All of them favor of the motion? That's a vote.
Any other business? Oh, yes.
Oh, yes, I have the business. All right, moving on to some administration, moving minutes from June 27th. You were here, Charlie was absent.
Oh, yes, I was sent here. See? You weren't here, because I have a motion approval minutes.
Second?
Second.
All of them favor? That's a vote. All right, we have a bill from PGB Engineering for $330, $330.34 for a level. Academy PD 11, build on our parkway, construction reviews.
We have the money?
We have the funds.
Second?
All of them favor? It's a vote.
Favorite part of the night?
Favorite part of the night?
Motion to give the second time.
Second.
There we go, first and second, all of them in favor? It's a vote. Upcoming potential activity. Had an informal meeting today, for somebody who wanted to do something on Union Street. Supposed to come back to us. Couple of modifications. See how that goes. Have you heard anything?
No.
No, it's been kind of quiet lately.
Did you say that we're not being announced?
Is that?
We're not being announced, but.
Yes, we have conflicting schedules.
We've got nothing on the schedule for August, I just want.
We're willing to head back on the golf course, if that one will be continued, again.
They don't say unless something comes up with a schedule. Just want to know when those plans can be ready, but I don't have anything. Long distance that I know of. I don't know. How could it be different?
Anybody else have?
Make a motion, would you?
Second?
All right, all of them favor? Vote.